I think. Thank you, Ty. Um, I think that we've got um enough of us here. Um, to call the meeting to order, um, so I will do that at six thirty. Um, I don't think that we will uh be. Uh, making any motions tonight, but just in case. Um, uh, myself and Alice and Shelby and Daryl are here. Um, and Chris is here. And Anthony is just signing on, so um, just in case we need to do something. I know that Karen's not coming, so at the moment I'll elevate Chris and Anthony to voting status. Um, and then I will move right on to agenda item three A. Um, and three B is gonna follow closely thereafter, but for both of these, I will turn. Um, I will turn the meeting over to Glenn. Glenn, welcome and and thank you for being here again.
My pleasure. Thanks, everybody.
Good.
Um, so uh, before I share a screen in terms of the regulations, uh, you may be aware that we received comments from Rick Osborne, Public Works Director. Uh, Denise Lord, Town Engineer, and from Mike Ziska, Town Attorney. Um, I'm in the process of compiling all of those and putting comments together. Um, so I think my thoughts about how to approach tonight would be for us to actually talk through the regulations themselves. And then when we've got all the comments together, we'll circle back. Um, I have a couple of follow up questions into Mike. Um, and then I think we'd be in a position to move forward uh with that material, so I wouldn't expect to uh. To get that far tonight, um, but we'll just carry that for a future meeting. Does that make sense?
Sure.
Okay. So I'm gonna share a screen here. I think uh, our goal tonight is to talk about the subdivision regulations. Um, at our meeting last month, the commission uh had a chance to uh get an overview of the regulations in terms of the type of material in there. Um, and I think to go through the regulations now and talk through base sections of the regulations, uh, particular provisions that the commission may have questions, et cetera, with. Um, and I think our goal should be to try to tailor the regulations. For the circumstances and situations that Kent is likely to uh experience in the future. Um, I think the current subdivision regulations from looking at the language and some of the other provisions, I I I have to say, I think most of the language probably dates from the seventies. Um, so uh, there are a number of things that have happened uh in case law and state statutes uh that are relevant to these regulations. Um, and then there's other provisions such as L I D and other things which are uh current today. Um, so I think our goal is to try to bring the regulations up to uh that level. Um, so that uh of the situations the commission is likely to experience in the future, um, get a good set of regulations in place. So I think my proposal, Matt, would be to start walking through page by page. Um, and the commission members, again, we tabled after last meeting to give everybody a chance to to go through the regulations and just see sort of what comments and issues come up. Um, so uh, whoa. I see what's going on there. Sorry about that.
Yeah, that's that, that's fine with uh, that's fine with me, Glenn. Does the, does this um, is this draft the same draft that we reviewed?
It is. I haven't made any changes yet, Matt, because again, I wouldn't want any changes to happen without the commission having a chance to to talk about and provide input. And that's also, I think, the rationale for let's go through this draft. Um, and then, once we've got that foundation behind us, uh, we can uh look at incorporating comments from uh Rick and from Denise and from Mike. Um, as part of that.
Great.
Um, just in terms of the table of contents, again, the basic organization of the regulations is first of all, just an overall introduction with some statutory and other profit procedures. Uh, provisions, section two is definitions and and things like that. Part three relates to parcel and lot requirements. These are things that apply to the land as it exists today or. As a result of the subdivision in terms of physical improvements and things like that. Section four is the infrastructure requirement. Should roads be built or drainage be required? The utilities installed, these are the provisions that would apply there. And then sections five, six, and seven detail. How the procedures will unfold in the three major parts of a subdivision application. The first part is coming in for with an application for approval. Uh, section six is now post approval procedures in the time period that. Um, before the maps get filed, before construction gets started. Um, and then section seven are the construction procedures overall. So just in your mind, as we're going through, um, there might be questions you may have that may relate to another section uh in the regulations. Uh, I should make this bigger. I apologize for that. Um, section one is really sort of statutory language in terms of authority and purposes. Um, these pretty much come from state law. Um, these are the provisions that are in the statute. Um, and so uh, the purposes are in con- conformance or accordance with the state statutory requirements, et cetera. Any thoughts or questions on page one? Yep. Good. Next page is applicability. This again tracks the statute. The regulations apply to any subdivision or re-subdivision of land within Kent. Um, require uh conformance with the regulations, um, enforcement um by the commission. Um. If a subdivision occurs which hasn't been approved by the commission. Commission has uh specific steps outlined in the statute uh in terms of uh. Whether or not that map would be um identified as being an unapproved subdivision. It might involve a filing on the land record. Um, but we do have tools for enforcement. Any question on page two? Page three is a provision that Mike and I have a difference of opinion on. We're still talking about this and working it out. There is a provision in the statutes that allows for modification of standards. Uh, Mike's thought is that, given the way the statute is worded, this allows the planning commission to modify the zoning regulations. And I've. Actually been involved in planning since nineteen seventy seven, when that act was established. And the legislative history points out that this is for allowing the planning commission to waive the subdivision regulations. So Mike and I are working this through. I would suggest that we not talk about this tonight and come back to it. Um, but much like the zoning commission has a zoning board of appeals and they're two separate entities. My sense is the statutory purpose of this was for the planning commission to be its own planning or subdivision board of appeals. Um, and that's what it relates to. Um. Any thoughts or questions you wanted to talk about on this or wait till Mike and I have sorted this out?
I think wait till you and Mike have sorted it out is 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 a good idea.
Good. And the next page is then some administrative provisions related to uh amendments. If somebody wants to amend the subdivision regulations. Um, effective date of the new regulations, um, and some other administrative provisions. So anything else in section one? Nope. Moving on to section two, so this is interpretation of the regulations. This is has the definitions. Um, uh, the words and terms uh that exist throughout the regulations. Some of the examples include here shall is mandatory and not discretionary, may is permissive. Uh, different uh tenses or words and and how those are applied. And in the event that there might be any confusion with regard to terms uh not defined in the regulations. Uh, refer to the zoning regulations, the general statutes, the building code. The Illustrated Book of Development Definitions um as reference materials for the the commission to be able to look at. Uh, should that need arise.
So one thing I note on this page, um, Glenn, and two A, um, that it's important, I think, for the commission to to remember is that um. Two A one, um, in their interpretation of the application. Interpretation and application, the provisions of these regulations shall be the minimum required. Um, unless the context clearly indicates that such provisions are intended to be a maximum. Um. We've, we've had a couple of discussions about minimums and maximums versus uh hard numbers, and I just wanted to make sure that the commission understood. This language here.
Good.
Um, and then also, um, there's there appears to be missing text for number three, Glenn, and. I know that you will go back and do and conform your numbering, but I wonder if there's something that got eliminated here in three that we should know about?
No, there's, there's not from an earlier draft. It's simply, again, a a return at the end of the paragraph continues the numbering. Um, so three should be deleted here, so we'll take care of that uh as part of the next addition.
Fine, and I know, I know there was uh, there there were, there were a couple of comments regarding numbering, and then we'll just, we can, we can table all of those until after the final conformance of the. The document, right?
Yep, perfect. Just so the commission's aware, any changes to get made from this draft will show up next time with revisions markings turned on. So you'll be able to see what's been added or changed in the text, um, and you'll be able to keep uh, keep it clear in your mind. Um, as to uh changes that have been made. So now the next page is we start to get into defined terms. Um, these are terms which generally apply to the subdivision of land. Um, there are some similarities between here and the zoning regulations. Um, but there's also some differences um because of the nature of a subdivision. Um. Any comments or questions on any of the definitions on page six?
No.
And then we go on page seven. So one of the changes in the statutes uh in about five years ago was this concept of what is a financial guarantee. For many years, we would use the word bond to mean a financial guarantee, but during the. Or after the subprime mortgage crisis, et cetera, the issue ended up being that bonds, which we thought were rock solid, turned out not to be. Um, and so bonds have become a less favored instrument. Um, and there are other things which have uh come into play. Um, and uh, so we use the term financial guarantee now to describe those tools. Okay. Next page. Made a change here, which is notified in the sidebar over here about the definition of a re-subdivision. I believe your current regulations contain languages which talked about substantially altering the shape of any lot. As to eliminate the septic or septic system reserve area without substituting another approved by the town sanitarian. Um, that's not consistent with state law, so that text has been removed. And I think practically speaking is that a a lot, should that happen, would not be buildable until it met the health. Or Torrentonary Health District requirements for a septic system in accordance with state law. Current regulations use the word street. And I substituted the word road through most of the subdivision regulations. Um, most urban areas and suburban areas often use the word street, but most rural areas use the word road. So I'm not sure there's any substantive difference between the two. Does the commission have a preference for road versus street?
Um, Glenn, this is Alice.
Yep.
Uh, I like road, but I also have another question that goes back to the former page.
Sure.
Where, if at all, does the term easement? Come into play as a right of way to a property or something? Maybe this isn't the place to ask this, but.
Well, let's just take a quick peek. So in the regulations, we talk about uh, you know, whether or not there's any utility easements that might affect the buildability of a property.
Okay.
We talk about a trail easement in an open space area.
Okay.
Um. We talk about easements uh for improvements of existing roads.
Yep.
Et cetera, uh, road design for subdivision, so it's.
Scattered.
It's scattered throughout, but I think one of the things we'll end up talking about a little bit. Uh, is the concept of easements, um, particularly with regard to open space, et cetera. So I think. Uh, again, with regard to drainage.
Yeah.
So.
Okay.
I'll head back to the beginning now.
I didn't mean to get off track, excuse me.
No, I think uh, the use of words and terms, excuse me, is very important. So I think. Let me get back to where we were.
Page nine.
Page seven, wasn't it?
Yep, now I just lost my uh page navigator. I axed it out by mistake. All right. I'll go find it another time. Uh, so I think that, yeah, got through re-subdivision.
And we're at road.
Yep.
Sorry.
Mike Ziska noted that we have a private road in here two times, so we're gonna merge those two. Anything in terms of these definitions? Hmm. And the last page of uh definitions. Heard conversation about solar before we got started here. The provisions in the statutes related to solar really talk about passive solar. And date to uh state law in the nineteen seventies with regard to this. But the basic idea is that. It's part of a subdivision, uh, a subdivider is supposed to indicate to the commission whether they have considered passive solar. They can answer yes or no, and they've met their statutory obligation. Um, so uh, this tracks the provisions in state law with regard to solar energy. Anything else on definitions? So now we're into parcel and lot requirements. So parcel and lots relate to things which are the lots themselves or the parcel being subdivided. Um, section three A says that uh, the commission shall find land to be suitable for building purposes. And land which is unsuitable because of flooding, drainage, slopes, bedrock, erosive soils, or other conditions which might provide a threat to public health, safety, or welfare. Shall not be approved as a building lot. So this gives the commission discretion and a basis, if you will, for determining the suitability of the uh land and lots. I think if uh. A lot meets the requirements of the health code in terms of water supply and sewage disposal, that would be a kind of an indication towards buildability. Um, but again, this gives the commission the ability to look at the unique circumstances of a parcel uh in reviewing a subdivision.
Glenn, does the state have any say in that portion of it, like land? Which the commission finds to be unsuitable? What if the state, does the state have regulations on that? Like, do they have like a minimum? Uh, requirement for land? Uh, to be buildable?
Um, it's really, uh, the health code would be the predominant consideration here. That if the. Lot doesn't pass the septic testing in terms of having a functioning septic or the ability to support a a septic system in accordance with the health code. Or because its soil capabilities are so limited that it would only support, let's say, a two bedroom house or a three bedroom house rather than a four bedroom house. Um, those would certainly be considerations for cons uh for the commission to think about. But there's really no state standards in terms of road steepness or uh other factors that says you cannot approve a road in excess of, you know, X percent, et cetera. Um, but in our regulations here in a future section, um, we have put in standards related to uh. Road steepness, driveway steepness, et cetera, um, to address that. And I think because zoning in Kent includes soil based zoning. Um, and the lot sizes uh provide. Opportunities within those soil areas um to find places for buildability. Um, that it would be a fairly dramatic situation should the regulation, should the commission find the need to use this regulation. Um, as a deterrent or prevention of a future subdivision. This is really kind of a save all, catch all. Um, and usually the commission would rely on specific things in the regulations itself. Next provision of the regulations. Leads to protection of important features. And this is where we call out um making provision to preserve natural features. Uh, preserve and enhance scenic views and other resources, archaeological sites, historically significant features. Make best use of the natural terrain. Um. Prevent pollution of wetlands, watercourses, water bodies, um, et cetera. Specific provisions related to flooding. Um, and gives the commission the uh power and authority here during the review process. To require the preservation or enhancement of specific features identified up above in three B one. Um, or require the submission of additional information. Um, about how these resources could be protected through, as Alice pointed out, conservation easements or conservation restrictions. Dedication of open space and similar types of things. So these are really meant to help Kent protect the resources which are most important in the community.
Glenn, this is where we talked about in the last meeting, that's the 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 preservation that that the commission. Um, or subdivision shall um preserve all of these things, and we were wondering whether. Um, there was different language that we could use to. Uh, maybe. Uh, to clarify that a little bit, so that if 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 a parcel was all scenic views or all farmland soils.
I think. You end up a very. Difficult situation there, Matt. I've got a note here on this page about that conversation from last month. Mike Ziska proposed in his email some alternative language that. Should be designed and arranged to achieve as many of the following goals as practical. But I think if the commission was to say, well, all of this land is a scenic view, you cannot subdivide it. I think you're messing around with the legal concept of a taking of property. Um. And that's risky area for the commission, so I would suggest that in that type of scenario. You uh use uh available resources such as other boards, commissions in town. I mean, I think. Conservation Wetlands Land Trust and others to really identify on a property, the resources which are important. Um, and use that as part of the application review, but. Um, if there was a property where. There was really no land, um, which was buildable. Um. I think that's a a very delicate situation, and I'd urge the commission in that situation to work, work through that with legal counsel.
Okay, that's fair. That's a. Um, understood.
Uh, the next page is about lot layout. Um. Is looking at the sidebar here in uh. These regulations, the proposal at the present time is that we're gonna be relocating section five of the current subdivision regulations, which is entitled conservation development. And carrying it over to the zoning regulations. So that's gonna be a zoning function rather than a subdivision function. Partly because. You could have a conservation type development, but without lots being created, and subdivisions really regulate the creation of lots. And so. Somebody wanted to so- subdivide land as a conservation development, they would be following the standards and criteria in the zoning regulations. Um, and uh, that specific body of law. Um. All, any proposed lot has to comply with the zoning regulations, the shape, size, location, topography, character. Um, shall ensure that there's uh no foreseeable difficulties in building on the lot, securing the necessary permits, et cetera. Um. Commission can determine that a parcel of land is unbuildable for building if it doesn't meet the minimum zoning requirements. Sound unsuitable or occupancy uh or building by reason of lack of provision for sewage, water. Topography, water, flooding, or other conditions. Or does not conform to the requirements that these or other applicable codes and regulations. Number five, I think, is just something I wanted to highlight for the commission. Um, some communities in the past have allowed for the creation of a parcel of land. Um, with the notation not an approved building lot. Um, and that is because they were unable to get septic approval for the property or did not have a water supply. Um, if the commission. Were to allow something like that to happen, we have this orphaned parcel out there. Which really doesn't have any status to it. And there've been examples in other communities over the years where these orphaned parcels come back years or decades later. Um, and people claim that they're a building lot. And that's generally not a good thing. So the these regulations are set up to basically say, we're not gonna create these orphaned parcels. It has to be part of another parcel of land. It may be an oversized parcel, et cetera. Um, but we're not going to allow for the creation of a parcel of land titled not an approved building lot.
So I had a co- I had a question about the the using parcel as opposed to lot.
Yep.
Um, and does it make sense to change that to instead of parcel to lot in this instance, based on the the definitions?
Well, a parcel could include. Parcel in the regulations generally ties to the sort of the parent parcel in a subdivision, and a lot is a subpart. But a lot generally in the statutes carries a special meaning. When a lot has been created, the commission is uh approving it as a buildable. Area, buildable piece of land. So parcel is either the parent parcel or it's a. Unbuildable piece of land or some other type of thing. So Mike raised this concept. He and I have been trading emails on it. Um, and I I think it helps to think about. The two of them together, Mike and I may end up just saying, no lot or parcel of land shall be created. And so uh, this is an area, again, I think Mike did a vi- Mike did a very uh thorough review of the regulations. Um, and it's always good to have a fresh set of eyes, so this is one of those things that we're working on.
Okay, great, thank you.
The next section of the regulations relates to open space. And so the statutes have evolved quite a bit in terms of open space related issues. Um, the. Regulations essentially say that. The subdivision shall provide for open space. Every subdivision shall provide for open space. Um, and I think there are a couple of ways that that can be done, and so the regulations are set up to allow for dedication of land within the subdivision. Dedication of land elsewhere in Kent. A fee in lieu of open space donation. A combination of land and fee. Or some other arrangement to be found by the commission to be acceptable. Now, this is intended to give the commission quite a bit of discretion and latitude with regard to the preservation of open space. Including its location, configuration, et cetera. Commission can ask for comments. From other boards or entities in terms of the appropriate. Configuration of the open space, whether perhaps a a different configuration might be uh better or preferred. And then the regulations go on to the next page to say. The minimum open space requirement is at least fifteen percent of the total area of the subdivision.
Glenn, before you go on to that, I just have a question about what you were just reading.
Yep.
Is it the commission's choice or the applicant's choice? If the ac- ac- if the applicant wants to do fee and. If the, if the applicant wants to do fee in lieu. But the commission wants. One of these other choices. Is it? Is it our choice or is it the applicants?
Set the regulations up so that some open space provision is required as part of every subdivision. The base condition is typically dedication of land. The applicant may offer a fee and the commission can decide whether or not to accept that. If they say, no, we will not accept that. Then now you're back to the applicant either providing land. On the parcel elsewhere in Kent or some other arrangement acceptable to the commission. So you are not forced. To accept fee in lieu of. But if somebody was to come in with a small subdivision. I think commission recently had an informal discussion with regard to a three lot subdivision. And you would say to yourself, well, 15% of, let's say the parcel was 10 acres. I don't know how much it was. But 15% of that is an acre and a half, and it wasn't adjacent to any other open space in Kent. So you might say, well, that's. Really important open space because it's got a unique natural resource on it, or you might say. That might not ever contribute to an open space system. So if there's no important natural resource there. Might it be better for the town of Kent to consider accepting the fee in lieu of? So this regulation allows for that conversation to take place. And you might say, no, you know. We don't want the fee or we don't want the land. But without the regulatory provisions, it's hard to have that conversation. Does that, does that help, Adam?
Yes, it does. Thank you.
You're welcome. So the provisions in the regulations about 15% of the land reserved for open space purposes, the commission shall consider the P O C D, open space plan. Presence or absence of any existing open spaces in the area, opportunities to interconnect open spaces. Protect significant natural features and, and other types of considerations. So that if the applicant comes in with a piece of property which. Is not where you think the open space could or should be. These are considerations for the commission. And would give you the opportunity to start a dialogue with the applicant. In terms of where the open space could or should be. When the subdivision butts an existing open space, the commission can require that the new open space. Be connected to the existing open space. So we can create greenways, we can create trails, we can protect stream corridors, riparian habitats. A lot of different things that might provide, you know, significant long-term benefits to the town. So again, we can have this type of dialogue. The. Provisions. In terms of. Open space. We'll talk about in a moment. Don't include the town of Kent. The current subdivision regulations say it's either. Homeowners Association. Or it's another entity. And one of the comments that Mike raised was whether or not we would want the town to be. Considered. As a possible recipient of open space. The other thing is you may recall as part of the conservation subdivision concept, we had this conversation about a proportionality requirement. And the proportionality requirement is that if 25% of the property. Is wetlands, watercourses, steep slopes, flood plains or other types of considerations. That. The open space requirement, 15% has to be configured the same way. Stated. Differently, if 75% of the land is not those things. At least 75% of the required open space cannot be those things either. This is something that we should definitely talk about because I know it came up as part of the. Conservation subdivision. But this concept of proportionality. Is something that the commission might think is beneficial.
Um, just. Before you go further.
Sure.
Just say, um, going back to where it was saying. Fee in lieu. And then it says fee in lieu donation.
Yep.
It's not a donation. It's a fee. I think we should take the word donation out unless you think differently.
I'll ask Mike that question because. The commission cannot require a fee in lieu of. All right. So the applicant has to offer the fee in lieu of, and then you would decide whether or not to accept.
Oh, okay.
So that's why the word donation was in there, but I'm just gonna. Make a note, ask Mike. Maybe it's a fee in lieu payment. So I think the way, Adam, that this is set up right now is that we're going to require some provision be made for open space. It's at least 15% of the land. Or there's a. Fee in lieu of. Provision. And if the applicant. Doesn't want to provide the land, they can offer fee in lieu of.
But we can't ask them for it. It has to be, it has to be something that they're offering to us. We can't require, I should say, we can't require them to, to. To pay a fee in lieu instead of providing land.
That's my understanding of the law, Adam. I think there are ways for the commission to have this dialogue as part of the approval process. And.
I'm asking because I, because I think this is something that we're going to. We're gonna, we're gonna see. I think it, so I, so I just wanted to understand. What as, what are, as a commission, what are? Parameters for what we can require or can't or.
Yeah, I, I, my understanding of the law is that the commission cannot require that. You can require that the applicant satisfy the standard of at least 15%. Or they can replace that with a fee in lieu of, but if you were to approve a subdivision subject to a fee in lieu. I think that you are in difficult territory. And part of that, Adam, relates to the fact that the statutes require a. Pre-approval agreement on what the value of the fee is. And it's generally related to an appraisal, although some towns use the assessed valuation. For that. So if you were to impose a fee in lieu of, you would not have met those prior conditions. And so again, I just, I think it's a very delicate area. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Glenn, did you say we would come back to proportionality to discuss later?
I think if you, if you have thoughts on it now, Alice, this wouldn't be a bad time. What are your thoughts on proportionality?
Well, I'm, I'm not sure the way you described it, that I had the right. That I was thinking about it the right way. So I wondered if you could. Just go through that definition used before.
Yep. So let's just try to make the math easy here. If there was a 40 acre parcel of land. And 10 acres of that land were wetlands, watercourses, steep slopes or floodplain. That would be 25% of the total. Now on that 40 acres, the applicant is provided, is required to provide at least 15% of the 40 acres is open space. And that would be six acres of land. So of that six acres that is required. A quarter of it. Could be wetlands, watercourses, steep slopes and floodplains. But. That would be about. So hang on, that'd be about one and a half acres, but. The other four and a half acres would have to be. Buildable land, non-wetland, non-watercourse, non-step slope and non-floodplain. So that would be the, an example of what communities have done with a quote proportionality requirement. You're requiring that the configuration of the open space or the type of land. Be. Not the, not, not the unbuildable land. It's got to reflect the makeup of the parcel as a whole. Now after that. The applicant may choose to give the town or the land trust or somebody else more open space. And. That might be wetlands or watercourses or steep slopes or floodplain. But that might be land also that the town or the homeowners association might consider to, you know, it's a, it's a beautiful ravine, let's say. It's got a water course in it. It's got steep slopes, but it's also a unique natural area. So the proportionality requirement sets a baseline. That. Again, the. Keep trying to use the word configuration. I'm not sure that's quite the right word, but the. Personality of the land or the parcel. Being used for the open space standard has to mimic the overall personality of the parcel in terms of sensitive resources. Is that helping at all?
Yes.
And then. Before we leave this page, I've always been concerned, as you know, with this at least language.
Yep.
And. The last time we spoke about it, I know that the at least 15%. Was. That the applicant could provide more if they wanted to. But this at least 15% or at the at least language has been. Posited as the, the commission could ask for more at their pleasure. So we just might just, I want to make sure that we, I'm, I am a proponent of making it a. That the, the applicant. Must provide. X. And they can provide more if they want, but, but the at least has to be, we have to find a way to, so that we all understand that the at least isn't at least. With regard to our. I don't want to say when, but I want to mean when.
Well, possibility, Matt, is that the language here from the current regulations here in the sidebar might be something for consideration. The commission might have a standard that all areas reserved for open space shall contain not less than one acre unless otherwise approved by the commission. So that gets through the, the, the small parts of open space, if you will. But the wording in the current regulations, the commission shall not require more than 15% of the gross area of the subdivision. So that's different than the language which I crafted here, which says at least 15%. I think regulations work best when the commission establishes a standard to be met. And which is clear and transparent rather than a fungible standard which, you know, the commission, depending on the. Week, the month or the year might modify for an applicant. So this word in the commission shall not require. More than 15%, but might accept more than 15% or my desire or something, something like that. So. I'll talk to Mike on this one as well.
Be great. Thank you.
You're welcome. So the next page again talks about ownership. The town is not in here. The following in order of preference for evaluating the ownership of open space. Is a nonprofit conservation organization acceptable to commission such as the Kent Land Trust? The second option is a neighborhood association reviewed and approved by the commission. Some towns do allow for municipal ownership. Or sometimes, for example. It's land dedicated to the town which might actually be used for a municipal facility or, or park or a recreation field or something else like that. So. It's possible the commission might want to consider adding in these two options. Ownership by the town of Kent. And, and the town of Kent does not want to own property, then they would simply say, no, we're not interested. Continue to go down the list. And that would still leave the other two, but. Right now, the only two options available here are the nonprofit conservation organization or a neighborhood association. So what's the, commission have any thoughts on that?
I like the idea of having the town account. As listed as that. We have very few. Land parcels that we own now. If we could acquire more through something like that, I think that that would be very helpful for the town account.
Does, does this fall into? Only land that's, that's. That's donated, that's not within the parcel?
No, I mean, it, Matt, it could. But. The circumstances or situations where the town might choose to acquire open space might be significantly limited. I mean, the land trust has done a great job over the years of acquiring, preserving, protecting, managing open space. And. I'm sure that people in Kent hope that those activities continue. But there might be a situation in the future. Where there might be a subdivision that might offer an opportunity for something else of benefit to the town. And. You might want to.
That would be reasonable. And I, I think Chris's point is well taken. That's, you know, that, that's acquiring land for. Approved for a, a new park would be great. But the open space as defined in this regulation is land preserved in perpetuity. For protection of natural resources, natural features, scenic resources or, or community character. Can, can you, can you sort of. Mold community character into a, into a new. Splash pad?
There's a provision elsewhere, hang on. So it says on the prior page. Which is where. Sorry. The subdivider transfers land to the town for municipal purposes, such transfers may be considered by the commission as a credit toward any open space dedication requirement. So in other words, this now is not subject to the definition of open space. This is land for municipal purposes. So just throwing some numbers around here. Somebody comes along with the subdivision and the open space requirement is going to be 15 acres. And maybe they contact the town and the town says, no, we really don't want the 15 acres, but we'd like five acres for an athletic field. So now the question is, okay, maybe the town now would, would. Accept the five acres and would the land trust or the neighborhood association accept the remaining ten? And the applicant would work out that detail. So I think. The town's component there would be a. Dedication for municipal purposes.
And we could manage that, you know, if the, if the, if the. Does it matter if, if we're in the middle of the rural zone and, and. And the town wants five acres of, of a parcel that's.
I wouldn't expect that to happen, Matt. I, I, but hang on a second here.
So just to throw this in there also, if. If the. If the town. Took a piece of land. Like this, would they be able to? Turn around and. Provide it to Kent affordable housing or. Or does it have to remain green space?
No, I think the issue here would be for municipal purposes.
Okay.
So I think that the idea here would be. As part of this subdivision process, I would envision that this would need to be declared by the applicant. I propose to meet your open space requirement of 15% as follows. Five acres to the town of Kent for municipal purposes. Here's their letter indicating that they are prepared to accept that land. 10 acres to the Kent Land Trust. I've met the 15. I've met the proportionality requirement. Boom. We're off and running. We've got something to work with. If on the other hand. Town doesn't want it, Kent Land Trust doesn't want it. We're either down to a neighborhood association by the property owners or. Maybe there's no open space reservation to be accepted by the town. But municipal purposes, help me out here, guys, for a second. There, there is some place, I think it's not East Kent. But on the eastern side of Kent, where, isn't there a historic schoolhouse?
Isn't that in the, in the hollow? Kent Hollow.
Okay. So let, let's say that Kent Hollow was owned by somebody who's. Or that piece of land, they were going to subdivide the property or, or land next to it. And. The town or the historic society, somebody might say, yeah, you know what? We'd love to have an acre or two added on for parking, for an interpretive area or something else like that. Boom. That could be a situation where the land get, part of the land gets transferred to the town for municipal. That could be a situation where the land get, part of the land gets transferred to the town for municipal purposes.
And that's, that's something that you envisioned that, that, that the commission would be considering that yes, that maybe that works or, but maybe, you know, it's. Something else doesn't work in that, in that location. And we can say, no, that doesn't really fit in that zone, even though the town wants it. We could say, you know, the five acres, no, we, we want it all to go to. Um, to some land.
Could be the land, or somebody says, well, the town wants it for, let's say for a dog park. Right? And you say, whoa, 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 hang on a second here. Maybe there's some noise or other things associated with that. And, and maybe that's not something the commission would do. So I think. The goal here is not to spark any type of conflict, for example, between the town, the land trust, the commission, the board of selectmen or anything else like that. But to start a dialogue. Right now, given the way the regs are set up, the, the town's not even in the equation. Could they be? Should they be? I, I guess I, I'd just like to put that on the table for the commission's consideration here going forward. And you may decide, no, we're comfortable with what we're doing today, or you know what? We think it makes sense to add that in. So.
Well, I think Chris is right. I think that there's been enough conversation about land acquisition for. You know, municipal land acquisition in town. In the, in the recent past, that it makes sense to, to include them.
Yep. Got it.
As long as we have that, you know, as long as it'll spark that dialogue and then we can say, you know, seeing that works and that doesn't work.
Yeah. And I, I think there, there may come a situation where everybody wants the open space. Um, and I think that, again, that's where the dialogue, uh, would be important. So I think that, uh. That would ripple through some other parts here regarding the ownership of land. Um, so I'll go ahead and. Look at how to add that in as well. And then the next section here.
Glenn, just one other, just one other question. We're on, you're on page 17, right?
16. This is 16, Matt.
Okay, sorry.
That's okay. Next, next, just checking the bottom of the page. Yeah, 16. Going to 17 now. The 17 is the fee in lieu of open space standards and provisions.
And I just wanted to bring up from, from our meeting that's last month, that, uh, that it's still the. It's still the common opinion that this, um, land for open space is the land for open space. And when we can't, it's, this is a, in current six D. That we can't expand that acquiring land for open space to. Um, recreation, non-town related per just recent discussion or affordable housing or anything else.
I think there's a provision in the statute and I've got a note from last, uh, month here, Matt, to look at the statute on this. Because I think I, I'm familiar with some other towns. My recollection is that they allow for maintenance. Of trails and other things related to the open space. So improvement, maybe there's going to be a parking lot and they would like a timber guide rail to protect the, let's say, the, the field area or the trail area from cars. And so they want a timber guide rail. So they've set up their open space fund to allow for that. But if it was going to be used for mowing or operations, that's really not something that is generally included in that type of provision.
Okay.
And then. There's a section down here in the statutes that, uh, there's certain situations where the commission cannot. Uh, require an open space set aside, and that's if it's a family transfer. So parent to children. Or parent, child, brother, sister, grandparent, grandchild, aunt, uncle, first cousin, et cetera, for no consideration. The second one is if it, uh, contains, uh, 20 more, 20% or more of the total number of housing units are affordable housing. Then commission can't require open space then. And then it may be modified by the commission at the current time under this regulation, if a subdivision contains three lots or less. Or the subdivision contains 10 acres or less. The basic provision here is says, if it's 10 acres or less. The open space requirement would be one and a half acres. So you may be in a situation where you might say, well, we may modify or waive the standard in that situation. And the same situation, the commission could modify it if it contains three lots or less. Now, if it's a smaller parcel of land and contains three lots or less, that's one thing. But if it's 120 acres of three lots or less, you might still say, we still want the 15%. But this gives the commission the ability to have that conversation. So I'm leaving open space at this point in time is, we're good? Uh, next provision is solar access. This is mentioned, this has been in the statute since the 1970s. It deals with the concept of solar energy techniques and site design techniques. Um, and the statutory language talks about maximizing solar heat gain. It was considered to be passive solar at that time. Um, the, uh, the, the heat from the sun warmed, uh. You know, a, a wall or a, a solar, passive solar collector, not, not the photovoltaic panels that we see today. And then the other statutory provision was minimize heat gain and provide for natural cooling during the cooling season. Um. And again, the statutes require that as part of the application, the subdivider shall demonstrate that these techniques have been considered. So most towns accomplish this through a letter. Submitted as part of the application. That provides a short explanation of how they have considered this. Question on solar access. Next provision is soil erosion sediment control. The state has issued a new manual. The current manual, I think, is dated 2002. Um, and the new erosion and sediment control manual will go into effect in 2024. Um, so we're going to update, uh, well, I guess maybe this language here is actually okay because it says. As amended. Um, so depending on when, when we adopt, uh, but requirement, uh, is. To be in accordance with the soil erosion and sediment control manual and make sure that. We carefully manage and control soil erosion and sediment control.
When are those meant to be adopted, Glenn? Those, those two?
Um, the state has issued a, uh. Revised water quality manual, just in, in the past month, Matt. And that's due to go into effect in March of 2024. And then also a revised guideline for soil erosion and sediment control, and that's due to go into effect in March of 2024 as well.
Yeah, it's, it's, if there, if there's any way to, 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 uh. Note that the, a 2024 date as opposed to a 2002 or 2004 date, that would, uh.
Yeah, I think. Yeah.
But still with the, with the as amended language.
Yep.
Something.
Because the, the manuals have been issued at this time. So they're just going through the adoption process for about six months, uh, or the, uh. Transition period about six months. So I think we're okay if we refer to 2024.
Okay. Good. Yeah. Both of those things are, bu- both of those ideas are pretty outdated. So we're, I'm happy that there's, there's updated.
Yep.
Connecticut is moving into the. Future.
So the next section.
Just to add to that real quick, um, you know, we go through a revision of the electrical. The national electrical code every three years, but the state doesn't necessarily adopt. You know, that particular, like right now, we're in, uh, 2023. Um, they have a code book out this year for 2023, but the state just finally adopted the 2020. So they may not adopt. The 2024 immediately. It may take a while. It might take some. You know, a lot of the times, uh, you know, unions and things like that get a hold of regulations like that and they hold up those. Um, they hold up those adoptions of those types of, uh, new regulations, just to add.
And just to be clear, Chris, they, uh, if it's not adopted by the state, it's not, uh, enforceable?
Usually the state goes by, they say for like the national electric code, we have adopted the 2020. Uh, and we have adopted it as. As of October 1st of 2022. So, um, they're still going through the 2023 code book and we may not adopt that until, who knows when. Might not be till 2025, 2026.
But what standard are you, are you bound to?
Uh, so it's whatever the state has adopted at the time. So right now we're bound to the 2020 standard. Uh, and there's also amendments to that too, that like they haven't completely said, okay, to the whole code book. There are specific amendments to certain things that, that they're not okay with still. You know, they, they, they've made amendments to it. So. Uh, we're bound by the 2020 state. The national electric code, but there are amendments to that too.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah. So I think the process for adoption of these, uh, manuals by DEP is different than what the department of public safety uses, I think, for the electrical and building code, et cetera. Uh, my understanding is that these are effective, that they've been issued. Um, but don't replace the other manuals in totality until March of next year, but I'm going to make a note to myself to. When effective, question mark.
All right, great.
So I'm excited to see Rick online because Rick, the next section, uh, falls definitely into your bailiwick. So, uh. Now we're talking about infrastructure requirements and this is again for subdivisions that would involve the construction of roads of some way, shape or form or some type as part of the development. Um, and what, uh, requirements, uh, will there be for such roads? Um, the, one of the issues that has been raised by Rick and also commented on by Mike. Is the concept of whether or not Kent wants to enable or allow for private roads. And so this is an issue that's. Bears some discussion, uh, merits discussion in terms of what Kent's long-term desire is. Some communities have, uh, tried to encourage private roads so that the public works department doesn't have to maintain it. And some other communities have said, no, no. We would like for more roads to be public. So these regulations are set up at the present time to allow for either. Um, and I think it's something that, that, uh, needs to be worked out. Um, by the town, by the commission, uh, with, uh, Rick's assistance, uh, here overall. And certainly I think one of the requirements for this should be that if it's a private road. It still needs to be built to town specifications in terms of. Road base, pavement thickness or other surface materials, drainage and so on. So it's not a, an escape route. Um. In terms of the road construction. Um, but it would mean in that situation that the town would ne- necessarily be responsible for maintaining. So. I think this, on this page, we just sort of have the general approach. I think this issue of town road or private road is, is something that's, uh. Going to merit further conversation. We require that roads be part of a roadway system. They have to connect to an existing state highway or town road. Um, or a road approved by the town. Um, and then we also make some provisions in here for improvement of existing roads. If somebody is subdividing along a road which doesn't meet town standards. And it needs to be improved to meet the needs of the proposed development. Or it's dangerous or inadequate, um, the commission, uh, can work with the applicant to require improvements to the existing route. So any thoughts or comments on this page?
Yeah, I got one.
Yeah, go ahead, Rick.
I don't know if you checked with Mike on that, but when, uh, let's say the St. John subdivision went in, they were required to do. Improvements to Kenneco Road. And they went to court and were, the court said that they cannot be required to do stuff outside. So.
Yeah. So I think you're right, Rick. So this is why the wording in this one says frontage on an existing town road. So what you're talking about is a, a court decision called Buttermilk Falls that basically says the commission cannot require improvements on roads which are away from the development, remote. Um, because that's a municipal responsibility. The issue here that what we focused in on is if the subdivision has frontage on an existing town road that does not meet the appropriate standards, well, that subdivision is now. Affecting that road directly, not indirectly. Uh, and my understanding and the reason it says check with Mike Ziska, um, is that the commission can require improvement to that road. So if it doesn't meet the paved width standard, Rick, or, um, drainage is inadequate. We can do that in the subdivision, but if it's, for example, a half mile away, no, that's, that's not going to work.
Okay.
There, there has been some question about. Um. The cost of building road to town standards and maybe that cost being prohibitive. Um, for somebody who wanted to develop. Uh, who want to develop a, a subdivision with a, a few house lots or several house lots. Um, that would be private and maintained by that private association. Would the commission be willing to accept? Um. Uh, road specifications that didn't meet town specs in order and, and, and approve that application as long as the, uh. Um, the homeowners association maintained and, um. They maintain that road. Or is it reasonable to just say that all, to all roads must be built just in case the town has to take them over?
Why, why does, um? Why, what's the situation where a town? Where our town has to take over the road maintenance?
Um, well, if that road, if that road is not being maintained, um, and it becomes a health and safety hazard for, for, um. Members of the public. I, I, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, I, I guess I kind of feel unless it. You know, if there was another subdivision, the sa- the size of St. John's Bridge, then I would. Say that the roads would have to be to town specs because of its size. But if you have a. A small subdivision like. Like, um. Iron Mountain Road or. Or, uh, what is that? Oak Ridge, which is at the other end of it, which are smaller roads. One has, you know. Four houses on it or five houses. If they want to have a. Uh. A neighborhood association, a road association that pays for. Their road maintenance, I think. That's okay.
What about, let's say, South Commons or Saddle Ridge?
Well, I think those are, so I would think of Saddle Ridge more along the lines of St. John's Peak. Um, so, so. A- am I? Is there a way, Glenn, that we can? Write this that? That would require. A subdivision of a certain size, maybe a cer- because it has more than. Eight houses or whatever, you know, I'm. I'm not saying eight is the number, but you know, um.
True.
But I'm asking you, but. You know, I think, I think larger, larger. Subdivision should be to town, the road should be to town specs, but I think smaller ones don't necessarily have to be.
I think this is very much. Adam, I think it's, it's often more than just the residents of the subdivision who may need to use those roads. There are people who may be visiting the residents and people, delivery people. Um, and I'm not sure whether the postal service would need to drop those roads as well. And I think the concerns, safety concerns for those people, um, should be taken into consideration.
I, I don't disagree, but there's lots of roads right around us that are Spectacle Ridge Road.
Yes.
Um, is not town maintained, um, that, that Oak Ridge Road off of Richards is not town maintained. Um, there's, there's plenty of, of roads that are not town maintained, that have a road association. They're smaller subdivisions. And. You know, on those subdivisions, those people have to travel those roads too. So generally they hire a company to. Do the plowing, they. Generally keep up. I, and Rick, if you really, if you feel differently about this, then. I would yield to, to what you have to say. I would yield to to what you have to say about that.
I did put in my comments to Glenn that if you do let private roads, then there should. Require an association or something. Because there are a lot of ones in town that have a number of houses on it that people are. Not chipping in to maintain or anything else, and then they're. They come to ask me to take it over, I'm definitely gonna say no, if it hasn't been. You know, built to right specs or anything like that, so.
So maybe that is, we should require that there has to be a road or a neighborhood association.
If it's durable, I don't know if you can or not by statute or law, whatever.
A- and over time, those associations sometimes dissolve or they don't re-up them with the clerk. As they're supposed to, and you know, who's monitoring those kind of things? So as time goes on, it does, it's a recipe. Recipe for contentiousness in a neighborhood when it comes to the roadways and who's gonna maintain them and you see it a lot.
Yeah. So what if, what if we did something like uh if it were, say, a four-home subdivision lot? And that they wanted to do an association. Uh but just, you know, then it would just be a a dirt road. Uh then if the town were to take it over in the future, it would be easier for them to create it or make it into a. Uh into a town-maintained road. How does this sound to you, Rick?
That would be alright, but I was just thinking. Along line, with like with the sewage systems that Saddle Ridge and Brookwoods and stuff. They're required to put money into an account each year in case the system fails, if the town can come in and fix it. If you couldn't require a homeowner association, maybe something set up like that. I don't know how that's, I'm sure that's by statute also. So you would have to know the statute that requires that.
I think that's a really interesting idea, Rick, um and that's some, I it it seems to satisfy Shelby's um. Concerns about access by others, you know, to what 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 jumped to my mind was the emergency services access, because you know, even people on. On private roads are are entitled to, well, maybe not entitled to, but expect have this expectation of the fire department and ambulance service coming to their house. Um so I like the idea of 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 a uh. Of a, you know, we're not allowed to call it a bond anymore, but a bond that that's maintained, some financial security. Um to maintain.
Then uh, I'm gonna have to throw a little cold water on that one, Matt. So they've changed the entire structure of financial guarantees. And what you can actually require them for. It kind of got to the stage some years ago where towns were requiring a hundred percent of the uh construction in a financial guarantee. And then the developer also had to pay to build the road, so basically there was two hundred percent of the money. Uh being put aside and during uh more challenging economic times. Uh developers got together and got the legislature to change the bill, so there's some significant. Significantly more limitations on financial guarantees than there used to be on this type of thing. But I think this is an area for us to explore. There are a lot of towns that have been working uh on this issue. Um with different types of approaches. Um I think the challenge uh some communities have found, as as Rick mentioned, is that years ago. The idea of living on a private road had a cachet to it, so there was quite a bit lot of interest in building on a on private roads. And after a while, as you said, Matt, that people said, well, how how come, you know, I'm paying my taxes and. How come I gotta pay on top of that to maintain the road? So they'd ask the the town to take the road over. And the town, as Rick points out, if it's not built to town standards, we're we're not putting money into it to. You know, get it to town standards, so we gotta figure out how to make this work. Some towns have required that private roads be built to standards. Such as a forty-foot right-of-way width rather than a fifty-foot, because there really is no way you can bring that up to town standard. Some towns have said, well, listen, if the road is Shelby pointed out, if the road doesn't connect anywhere. If it's a cul-de-sac, why is, why should that be a town road? It doesn't provide any overall town circulation. It's really just for the benefit of the owners along it. Why, why aren't they paying for their road rather than other people in town paying for their road? So there's quite a lot of disparate thoughts on this particular issue, and I think it's something that might involve further discussion. Um as to how we would like to consider this in the future. Anybody remember the last time a. Public road was created as part of a subdivision in Kent? Was it nineties, eighties? Probably been a long time.
So I just. Accepted, I think it was Meadow Street, so that was in the nineties, yeah.
Yeah. So roads have gotten much more expensive to build, which is why there's some reluctance, if you will, for subdivisions and other things, the economics don't work. But it's also important to recognize that, and Rick will be the first to tell us, the roads have become much more expensive to maintain. Um pavement deteriorates over time, it creates an obligation on the part of the municipality to continue to pour money into that for decades to come. And so the question is finding that right balance is important. Um so I think that this is a very important part of the subdivision regulations. Um as to what we'll allow and also what we might require. So um. That's kind of an overview of where we're at at this time. Uh any other thoughts on this page? So the next section deals with road standards, and this is where we have the. Uh construction standards in terms of right-of-way width, travel-away width, et cetera. This box is in this uh gold background color here, because I think it's really important that for Rick and Denise. Uh in the commission to kind of look at this and weigh in as to um how this might work. Um and whether or not these standards are appropriate. Um we have uh started to take some of the existing town. Specifications in terms of road base and road surface and created a separate. Uh manual for Rick and others, which is the road construction specifications. Um and again, that talks about pavement depth, stone thickness, et cetera. We've got standards in here related to minimum and maximum grade. Minimum grade is to make sure that the road drains. If it's flatter than one percent, the water can pond, and we really prefer that not happen. And then the maximum road grade, uh Kent's not exactly flat in many parts of the community, and so. How steep can a road be and still provide safe access and navigability um in certain situations? Um in some towns, you use different numbers than what are suggested here. Um what should the crown on the road be? How much should each side of the road uh drain away? What should the design speed be and some of the other standards on the road? So these are somewhat technical in nature. But they can have a significant impact on the design of the subdivision, so getting these tuned, if you will, to Kent. Um is important uh for us overall. The provision down below here, curbing shall be generally avoided except where the commission uh or the Public Works Director. Um require in order to control drainage. This starts to lead the way to L I D standards, where we try to treat rainfall closer to where the raindrop falls, but. As Rick will also tell us, the steeper roads where there's slopes and everything else is. Where we tend to have the biggest drainage problems, because the, you know, the rain picks up uh in the gutter and can cause problems that way. Thoughts on? These standards, Rick? Anybody on the commission?
Uh no, specific tonight, I'll go through them again with Denise or whoever.
Yeah, if you would, Rick, I think we really want these to work best for you and and for the town. Um and I'm just making a note to myself, I think I sent the construction specifications over in like January, February. But I'm gonna resend those again.
And we are requiring wider width paved area than a lot of roads are in town already, so. That may change some. I think, but but the twenty-fourers. I don't think we're gonna have too many collector subdivisions, but. We brought that down a little bit, the maybe twenty-two or.
So I think the issue is for commission's consideration, the um roadways which are wider. And certainly nowadays, modern roadways are built with horizontal and vertical controls. That's. Can affect the rural character of town. So if we don't need a twenty-foot wide roadway, if we think we can handle. Two lanes of passing traffic on eighteen feet. And this indicates there's a three-foot shoulder on each side, so that if your wheels go off. It's not a curb, it's not the grading or any a hill or anything else, there's a little extra grass space adjacent to the road. Um. That that could make a difference, if you will, in terms of the rural character. Nowadays, there's enough grading that goes into a road to maintain these minimum and maximum grades. That's um. Doesn't always follow the topography as closely as it might have historically. It's generally a little flatter than. Than it might have been. So food for thought. So the next uh page. Is intersection design. Again, this is basically traffic safety issues here, making sure we have adequate sightlines, making sure the roadways that intersect. With the main roadway, don't come in at too steep an angle or that, uh you know, don't obstruct the sightline. Intersections are offset from each other, so the cars aren't conflicting, uh if they're both trying to access the main road at the same time. Um and then, you know, the street curb line or the um edge of the pavement. Intersection and sight distances, et cetera. So these provisions here relate to intersection design. Any questions or comments from the commission here? Next section has to do with street connectivity. Um this again is. What's our preference either for cul-de-sacs or connecting roads? Um I think as Rick pointed out, we're probably not likely to be building too many more collector roads in Kent. Um but um do we want a proliferation of cul-de-sacs, or do we want to encourage roads to be connected? Um what should our approach be here in terms of street connectivity? And we may treat the village different than we might treat the rural areas. Um. So this is, this is uh laid out to address that. Um at the end of a uh dead-end street. Um there could be two types of dead-end streets, one of which is a permanent dead-end, which is it's a cul-de-sac, it's always gonna be a cul-de-sac. The road's not connecting anywhere. Some communities require that the cul-de-sac be built as what I'll call a hammerhead. Not excuse, not a hammerhead, a a radius at the end, and at the end of the road is surrounded by houses. And this reinforces the perception of travelers and buyers that this road doesn't go anywhere. The other alternative here is the construction of a cul-de-sac. Might be near the property line where it's got a little protrusion on the end. Which is meant to indicate to people that this road can be connected in the future into adjacent property. If the commission in its role as regulators of subdivisions allows cul-de-sacs. But doesn't provide for access to adjacent undeveloped property, that land becomes landlocked. And that's not always the best outcome or scenario here. So there can be situations where the commission might approve a permanent cul-de-sac where that's appropriate. But might also allow or require a temporary cul-de-sac. If it's needed to provide access to adjoining property, even adjoining open space. So there's two provisions here in the regulations related to the construction of cul-de-sacs. Um and and certainly in more suburban communities than Kent, this is a huge issue. Because realtors generally say to people, you're buying a lot on a cul-de-sac. And that's considered valuable by people, but if it turns out later that the road's gonna be connected, people blame the town. For connecting the road, when in fact it was always designed and intended to be that way. So this can be a way to address that issue, because the design of the cul-de-sac clearly leaves the impression. That road's going someplace. So I I think uh some feedback from the commission at some point in time that this this is too detailed or too suburban. Or something that we should leave in the regs for consideration could be important.
Is it okay to have them both?
Yep. Many, many towns do.
And. It seems to me that that the provisions of a cul-de-sac is that that is a dead end. You know, it's a cul-de-sac street that will not be extended, and 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 in some cases that. Is appropriate, where you've got this parcel of land. Um that's not leading anything, and you see you've got another parcel of land that's that's accessible from other places. Or maybe another parcel of land that's not accessible from other places and. Um then that that's not really our concern, right? If it's not accessible, then you can't build on it. Right?
Yeah, I mean, I think people may own landlocked property today. And they might hope that a subdivision of adjacent property would provide access to them. That's not the commission's problem to solve. Necessarily. But. There might be circumstances or situations where the commission may want to consider the overall. Circulation within a particular neighborhood or roads. So this language is set up that the commission may require. That the roads in a subdivision provide for the extension of existing roads or future extension of proposed roads into a budding property. You don't have to.
But by having them both in here, we 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 leave ourselves open to that uh that possibility.
Again, to have that conversation here, you might have somebody show up at a public hearing who jones adjacent property and say, I beg the commission. To require the extension of the road to my property. And you may decide that that's not something you want to get involved in, or you may. Does any statutory dictate on what you must do on this particular issue? But it might be something worthy of consideration.
Shelby, did you have something to say about this? Um I I didn't mean to interrupt, I I thought. You can say no.
No, I didn't.
Thank you.
Um. Um the next provision, the set of provisions is related to how long a dead end might be. So for many towns, the issue is, well, how many houses can we have on a dead-end street before it gets too long? That, you know, if there, something happened to the roadway, it washed out, or a tree fell, that fire equipment actually couldn't get, how many houses are gonna be at risk? So some towns have adopted regulations to limit the maximum length of a cul-de-sac. Or the number of lots that can be built on it before it's got to be connected to another street. And so. It's possible in rural parts of the country that you might have a cul-de-sac that's a mile long. Or it might be other situations, you say, eh, hang on a second here, maybe maybe we can or we shouldn't allow that. So this regulation right here is set up as a maximum of twenty-five hundred feet or eight building lots. On a street. So if those don't feel right or feel uncomfortable in Kent, then we should talk about that. Alright. Yes?
Um it's Donna. How are you?
Good.
Um what happens? What happens if you already have a subdivision that has ten lots on it? And you're doing eight? Does that, does that make that subdivision non-conforming at that point in time, or?
Well, I think it would create a challenge for the new subdivision. So. What what you've sort of described, Donna, is what might be called Daisy chaining subdivisions.
Okay.
And each time this happens, well, I'm just gonna add another eight lots, and I'm just gonna add another eight, and another eight, and another eight. Then you start to get to a point where it's like, well, hang on a second, how many, how many lots are on this dead end? Or, you know, what's the length of the road? And that really, this becomes a policy issue for the commission. So.
But it doesn't, it doesn't affect the legality of the subdivision that had already been created then, right?
No.
So it's not that this becomes a pre-existing non-conforming subdivision. Because the new regs say eight, but at the time that the subdivision was created, it was ten.
Yeah, and so Donna, you were using the phrase pre-existing non-conform, which is really a zoning term, not a. not a subdivision term. But the issue, I mean, I think the, the towns that have monitored this type of regulation closely are concerned about the public safety aspects and the public works aspects of maintaining, you know, these. I mean, here on the bottom of graphic here, we have sort of daisy chain subdivision on top. And you could imagine another situation where that gets extended, another one where that gets extended and poor Rick's got to plow the snow and everything else in there. So is that, is that okay? Is our volunteer fire and everything else, if, if it's okay, then we don't necessarily need these provisions or these limitations. Or maybe it's something that we should provide supplemental standards for, you know, fire protection, water, underground cisterns, things like that. Just something to think about.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey Glenn, how do you, how do you measure? The number of lots that had entry into the turnaround? Right? Where, where does the turnaround start? Is it turnaround of the full cul-de-sac?
Well, I think, let me go back one page. So frontage, can you see my cursor here?
Yes, sir.
So the, the, the frontage for this first lot here would be measured along the property line. Same thing would happen for the next lot, so those would have to meet the standards. Okay? The same thing would go for a permanent cul-de-sac, the frontage would be measured along the frontage going around. And some town zoning regulations allow on a turnaround like this, that you can actually measure the frontage of the front yard setback. So that could be back here. So that's how you would measure the frontage. But I think in this regulation, what we end up with is a limitation on the number of lots. Eight building lots, which includes the two at the corner. So right, the first two lots at the corner and then six more after that. And 2,500 feet is generally measured along the center line of the road.
Yes, and I, I was reacting to seven A, the last, the, the last provision, no more than two lots shall have entry onto the turnaround.
Oh, I got you. Okay.
That two lots would be the lots that have a majority of frontage along that, that curvature along.
Well, no, so actually that's a good point, Matt, because our diagram now in the regs is not consistent and would need to change. In this one, this scenario here, we could meet that requirement, right? Because these lots could have put their driveways out of the, the cul-de-sac or the turnaround. And these two would use the turnaround. In this scenario here, we're showing these two lots could tie in here, but now you've got three lots tying in. Right? So that, that two lot limitation, this is decidedly much more suburban than Kent is. So that maybe take a look at that two lot prohibition.
So as long as we had 25 feet of frontage along the road that didn't incorporate or didn't wasn't part of that turnaround, then, then those would be excluded from that.
Well, the way it's worded, Matt, is it says have entry into the turnaround. So you can have frontage on it, but you can't put your driveway on it.
Okay, fine.
But I'm just, I'm going to go take a look at that two lot threshold and think about that.
Great.
Anything else? What's that, Rick?
That does help us out and the cul-de-sacs with the the, like the private property at the end or the
Yeah.
the roadway.
Yep.
Those ones with the houses are all the way around. Whether there's three or five driveways coming off it. In the winter time, we have to pile the snow up in the center of the cul-de-sac and then go back that day and take it away. Yeah, you're filling up somebody's front yard with it and they don't like that, so.
Yeah.
Just got to plow it around in a circle.
They just keep plowing, drivers will never get out of there.
Yeah, okay.
Um, there's some last provisions related to road names and just other requirements for road construction. Um, so that's here. And then also for driveways. Mike, Zisk proposed some language here that indicates that somebody has to show you that they can build a driveway with a maximum slope of 15%. But the subdivision regulations is really not the best place for this standard. Because our enforcement tools on a subdivision are, aren't really that good for things like driveways. This might need to be a town ordinance or, or some other provision in the zoning regulations, et cetera. Now we're on to two of the big items that come along with any subdivision. These are pretty important, first of which is that every lot has to demonstrate that it's got sewage disposal in accordance with the health code. If there's sewers available, then sewer system shall be utilized. And then the second part is that they have to demonstrate that they're going to have a potable water supply in accordance with the health code. And you may recall in our prior discussion about sort of being consumer protection function, that's kind of what subdivision approval is. Any buyer would want to know that the lot is buildable because they can A, get a septic system and B, get a water supply. Um, so these are pretty important and pretty straightforward. Uh, next provision is related to storm drainage. As part of our work on the zoning regulations several years back, we introduced LID provisions and the storm drainage here links and ties into that. In terms of the design and installation of stormwater drainage. So I think Denise and Rick have both looked through this. I don't think there was any major comments from here. But certainly with the increasing frequency and severity of storm events, stormwater drainage is, is pretty important. And I think what we've got here is up to date standards for use in the town. Actually, just looking at Denise's comments, she did have a comment on the next page. That's oh, sorry, didn't get there yet. She's got updated information for the rainfall intensity calculations, and this is pretty critical as to how how drainage systems get designed. And so she's got updated reference source here for us. I think most of the other stuff on drainage is fairly technical in nature. So I think I know that Denise and Rick both looked at these. I kind of think we're good here. Matt, I'm going to go a couple more pages here, then we'll start a section five and then we'll make a call if we keep going to get through or whether we want to pause and reflect whatever we think is best. Wired utilities, the general requirement is that the utility shall be stalled underground unless the commission determines that there's some reason why that's infeasible or impractical. Sidewalks are generally not required. I think Mike's got some suggested wording for here. Most because, because Kent's not really a subdivision sidewalk type of community. But we might want to require sidewalks within the Kent Village overlay district or where considered necessary for public safety and that might be something for the commission to consider as part of approval of an application. And if sidewalks aren't appropriate, maybe roadside paths or other pathways in the subdivision could be considered. Terms of fire protection, there are provisions in here, considerations with regard to availability of water. Their fire department rolls from the center of Kent, so up to East Kent is going to take it up a big hill and kind of a long way. And then the question ends up being resupply of water into the tankers. Some communities allow for or require supplemental water systems or dry hydrants installation or underground cisterns, et cetera. Um, and this raises this as a possibility as part of a subdivision. Again, a larger subdivision might put an underground cistern close to the intersection entering the subdivision. So that that water could be available to the subdivision or to other houses in the vicinity to improve water supply, fire protection overall. Section five is the next section of the regulations. And this relates to application procedures.
So I would say Glenn, the section five and section six are procedural.
Yep.
And while important, um, I would, I think I would try to rely on Ty and Donna for their expertise in these sections five and section six. So I know Donna and Ty, you, you both looked at these. And I think it's important that the balance of the commission review these, but I'm not sure that we need to spend a lot of time on the, on this administrative procedures. Do you agree with that, Ty, or you think we should go through them?
No, I agree. I think, I think we're fine. I'll take a second look at them, see if anything jumps out, but I, I went through them quickly and I thought they were fine.
And I think Mike's got some comments too. So I think if it's okay with the commission, I'll work with Ty and Donna and integrate Mike's comments into here. And any revisions or changes will come back as marked up text.
That's great. And then, and then section seven on the construction procedures. These are, these are less administrative, but they're and they're, they're certainly important in terms of implementation of the plans. Is it, am I understanding that right as well?
I think this is kind of the key stuff. If there are public improvements to be built, that could include a roadway, that it could include a storm drainage system or other provisions or the construction of the roadway. How should it be done to make sure that the town of Kent ends up with, in the case of a, a public road, town road, something that's well-built, well-constructed and represents good value to the town? So this really lays out the construction procedures that we would like to see followed. Erosion sediment control, clearing and grading. What are we going to be doing with stumps and, and other types of non-structural fill? Constructing the improvements overall. Inspecting the improvements during the construction for the roadway. Rick's pretty talented, but he can't be in two places at once. So making sure that the road gets inspected. When the base goes down, when the pavement goes on, then all of these types of things are done appropriately. Either because Rick is able to do it, or in fact, there's going to be a third party person inspecting the improvements so that the town knows when it comes to road acceptance, that the road was properly constructed. So I think those are the types of provisions that are in here right now for construction. And leading through to the statutory requirements for the period for completion of improvements. The statutes give a developer five years to complete the improvements and sometimes longer if they ask for extensions. And this is again, what the financial guarantee is for. And then the installation of monuments and markers at the corners of lots, installation of road signs and other traffic control devices. And then final acceptance and maintenance of the roadway. The process that somebody would go through to end up with the road accepted by the town. So I think if Ty and Donna, if I could ask you guys to also take a look at seven. And you also, Rick, just to make sure that everything here works and makes sense overall. This is the roadmap following approval by the commission and signing of the subdivision plan that actual construction would be occurring. And again, we want to make sure that it, it works, given what you guys do in town already.
Rick, I know that you had a comment here about certificates of occupancy being or
Seven A three.
Yeah. We had a conversation at our last meeting regarding issuing temporary certificates or understanding that the road would be built to a certain, to a certain stage and then waiting until the final top course and the mostly the final top course being installed after the majority of the, the home construction was completed. Do you have an opinion about that?
Well, I I'd like it to, you know, be done at the end when mostly the construction was done, but I don't see I can issue COs until the road's done, because if that's going to be one of the requirements for the subdivision, then the CO wouldn't be issued till everything was complete, right? Till the road was it doesn't say temporary, it just says, oh, well, it says any certificate of occupancy, but.
Mike's, uh, Zisk has given us some pushback on this. And what he said is that the certificate of occupancy is tied in the statutes to the zoning regulations, not the subdivision regulations. And in some commissions, we have a separate planning commission and zoning commission. So this is one of the things that I expect to be working on with Mike, but what Mike is saying is that if somebody wants a certificate of occupancy and the road is not built, let's say to binder course, then the issue is for the town to call the bond. Now, what makes that challenging is that we end up with a three-party conversation. We have the town, the home builder, home buyer, and the original subdivider. Everybody's pointing their fingers at somebody else. So what I want to do is work out with Mike what he thinks is the best approach here. The idea like, look, nobody gets a CO until the road's finished, allows the town to sit back and let the home builder and the developer of the subdivision work this out because they had a contractual business relationship in terms of the sale of the lot, et cetera. If the town's recourse is to only call the bond, then that basically sets up a three-way fight and the town's in the middle of it and that may not be built or, or may not be productive. And we're going to ask Rick to build the road based on the bond. Because that's what happens when you call the bond. So that, it just doesn't seem like it's a great scenario. So I think I'm going to need to work on this with Mike.
And it's, I, I think it's, it's, it's my opinion that that if, if the town, if the road is to be deeded to the town, if it has become, i- i- if it is to become a town road, then we don't want that top course to be put down. We don't want the road to be completed too soon because then in effect, the town is, at, at the end of the day, getting a road that's old and not new. Right? So if you've got an 18 lot subdivision off of a road and, and, and you, you put the top course pavement on the road and then you build 18 houses and you're running track machines and you're, you know, driving over the curbs and the drainage maybe doesn't work and you know, what, that, that doesn't serve anybody.
I don't disagree with you, Matt. It's the challenge in the way the statutes are constructed and the way that the financial guarantee provisions were modified. But again, let me talk this over with Mike because he's got experience on this in multiple towns and might even be involved in enforcement of this. We'll see if we can find a better, a good solution.
That's fair.
So I think that puts us through the subdivision regulations. I think what I would propose to do is organize comments from Rick, Denise and Mike into a report back to the commission. Also notice that we received an email today with some additional comments, so to organize that for the commission and suggest that we come back and talk about that at a future meeting. It's already 8:20, so the other thing we have on our agenda is It's already eight 20. So the other thing we have on our agenda is conservation development. I don't know if we're ready to tackle that tonight or we want to talk about that, uh, at a future meeting as well.
When did that email come through today? That was that part of the, the, the package from earlier today, Ty?
Um, it came through, I, I think later this afternoon. It was from Joe Spelbos. So I, he asked that it be included in the public file. So I did that and shared it with Glenn.
Okay. All right. I, I definitely did not have, I definitely did not review the, I, I know Yose's initial comment said to be continued or more to follow or something like that. So I guess that, that the email from today was the more to follow. So it's in the public record and, and Glenn, you'll take that into account as you, um, as you sort of refine the comments on, on this version.
Yeah. Let me figure out the best way to do that, Matt. I mean, um, it might be most user-friendly for the commission. If Yose's comments were integrated with the technical comments from Rick and Mike and Denise. On the other hand, Rick and Mike and Denise are town officials, town employees, town consultants. And so, uh, Yose has a lot of experience dealing with lane use related issues. Um, but we might just keep those separate so that there's a difference between the legal, technical versus, uh, others' experience or, uh, advice on, on how the regulations could be configured. So let me take a look at all of them. Um, and I'll put something together for our future meeting.
That's great. I, I, I agree with that. It wholeheartedly, you know, especially in light of, you know, it's, it's nice to be able to look at the, at the comments before the meeting, but, um, for the comments to come in. I just haven't had a chance to look at them and I'm not sure how I feel about any, uh, the ones that I haven't reviewed.
Yep. So let me, uh, let me get started on that. And I think again, uh, there were a number of comments from Mike. I've read through most of them. I think most of them, I think my recommendation, the commission will be to incorporate what his suggestions were. There's a couple we're still working out. But I'd like to be able to give the commission ample time before our next meeting to, to read that material through. So I'm going to try to turn it around quickly. And get it back out.
Okay. And with regards to the, to the, the, the conservation subdivision, I'd like to be respectful of the commission's time and, and keep this to a couple of hours and we're, we're coming up on that threshold now. But I would be in favor of finding some time. Um, because there's just a couple of, I think just a couple of issues that we need to discuss regarding the conservation subdivision. Um, and I'd like to dedicate some, um, some thoughtful time to that. So Ty, maybe we could see what works for. I know we're going to be up against the, the subdivision regulations and the moratorium. We have to be finished with this and they have to go into effect by the end of February, right?
So, yeah.
Um, so I, I want to, I want to sort of be respectful of that timeline, but I also maybe think that we should, because they're tied so closely together, that the next meeting should be dedicated to the, to the conservation subdivision and we should do that sooner rather than later. Um.
So Matt, I think, just looking at the calendar, my calendar right now, I have our next planning commission meeting for November 16th. Which is one, two, three, four and a half weeks out. Is that right?
Could we start that meeting with the conservation subdivision and then move on to the subdivision regs and get through as much as we can?
We could, Matt. I'm just thinking if we have a February deadline, what might work, if the commission's comfortable, is slotting in a meeting sometime between now and November 16th. Um, so that would allow us now to A, have a meeting on the conservation subdivision plus Matt, uh, Mike's comments, uh, combined with Rick's and Denise's. And have a revised set of regulations back before Thanksgiving. And then at that point in time, the commission could sort of pull the trigger in December for a January hearing and adoption before February. So that I just, I, I would feel that having, uh, we, we might need one special meeting, not, not a two-hour duration, but sometime in the next month. Or sometime between now and Thanksgiving, I think would make this perhaps a little bit more manageable. So just food for thought for consideration.
Okay. So it's October 16th now, and we're talking about having a meeting on November 16th and Thanksgiving is on the 29th this week, this year, right? That's, that's
I think it's the week before.
23rd.
Yeah.
Yeah, 23rd.
Okay. So then we're talking about, um, one, two, three weeks. Probably don't want to do it on Thanksgiving. So that, that'll be, that, that will be tight. But why don't we ask Ty to send us? Ty, would you send out a doodle poll for, for something that might work for us, um, between now and the 16th? Um, taking into account your other, your constraints?
Yep.
Um, I think Glenn's, I think Glenn's, oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Matt. Sorry.
I was just thinking that, that, uh, Glenn's idea is good, that if we can get, um, if we can be in a position to review, um, the subdivision regulations on the 16th and also be in a position to have the conservation, um, subdivision regulations done by Thanksgiving, then that opens up December and January for special meetings and, and, and public comment and then adoption. So if we could work that out, that would be great. So sorry, Chris, go ahead.
I was just going to say the 16th was, uh, one week before Thanksgiving and it's four weeks and a couple of days from today.
Yeah. That is right. So we've got a couple of Thursdays between now and then. If we want to do Thursdays, we got, we, we, we have several times, um, several days. And I, I know it's a lot to ask, but if we can work it out, we, we should. So I'll leave that in your court time. You'll send out a doodle poll for, you know, a couple of dates and times, and we'll see whether we can't get a quorum to look at those.
Alright, one sec, Glenn.
Okay, great. Then uh, where'd you all go? Okay. You stopped sharing Glenn, so the screens got all st- changed around.
I did that because I saw you looking back, man. I just wanted to match you up just a little bit, you know, being so efficient tonight.
Um, alright, so then, um, I would, I think let's have a motion to table, um, three B, agenda item three B to a, a to be scheduled special meeting. So moved.
Tagging.
Great. Thanks, Adam and Daryl. Um, any discussion? Then all those in favor, so signify by raising your hand and or saying aye.
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 Thanks, Anthony. Um, alright, that's all of us who are, who are here. Um, which, uh, we should note that, uh, that we lost, um, Alice at some point.
She left me.
We have that. Okay, great. Um, alright, then, uh, Glenn, I'll, I'll, I'll thank you for your time and your consideration, your hard work. Um, and I would, uh, then unless there's any more discussion, look for a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion when you adjourn.
Okay. Thanks, everybody. Thanks for your time and we'll talk, uh, we'll talk soon.
Thanks, everybody.